Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the February 3rd, 2025 Crystal City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Could everyone please rise for the Pledge of Legions to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Jennifer Methen.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kubal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you, for approval, the minutes of the work session held on January 13th, 2025, motion would be in order?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderwoman Methen, for the approval of the January 13th, 2025, work session minutes. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And you also have before you the minutes for approval from the city council meeting held on January 20th, 2025, motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on January 20th, 2025. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Jennifer Methen.
Upstain.
Darrell Jefferson.
Upstain.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
And Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And you have before you, for approval, the minutes of the work session held on January 27th, 2025.
So moved, yes, presented. Second.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on January 27th, 2025. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, tonight we have with us Alex Boyd. Good evening, Alex.
Good evening, everyone. Um, due to there is one item on the agenda tonight, which I believe everyone should be aware of, this is a proposed addendum to the legal services agreement with the Driscoll Firm LLC and Kennedy and Madonna LLP. Um, I believe Mr. Stiff did send an email to the board regarding the changes that need to be made on this, so this is simply brought up for the board to vote on approving the addendum to the legal services agreement. Just so everyone knows, there are not any changes to the fees or representation or anything like this, this was simply a name change of the firm that was done due to, um, the information that was included in the email. I'm happy to discuss it if anybody has any questions.
Motion would be in order?
So moved, yes, presented. Second.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, to approve an addendum to legal services agreement with the Driscoll Firm LLC, Kennedy and Madonna LLP. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Anything else, Alex?
I'm sorry, nothing else.
Okay, any questions of our city attorney?
Uh, yes, I just want to make sure for our next work session, I had talked to Mike about it, the Alderman's compensation ordinance, and then also the places for eating tax with the Italian Culture Club.
Okay.
We could have discussion on that.
Yep, that should be fine.
Okay, thanks, Alex. Moving on to our city administrator, Tony Graf. Good evening, Tony.
Yes, the first item is a job announcement, we talked about the work session for the city administrators recruitment through MGT Consulting. So in your packet, you had the job announcement, and then we talked about job description, some minor changes. The only ones that I'm still recommending dealt with abilities, skills, and responsibilities. We did not change anything else in the job description in regards to the reporting, uh, process in the organization. So the, the reason for the minor changes was to open up the recruitment field a little bit more, um, for candidates. So I'd be asking to approve the job, job announcement as presented by our consultants, and then to do the minor amendments within the job description that addresses those couple of, uh...
So the job description still has a line in it that needs to be removed.
Which line?
We discussed this thoroughly, including the finance department.
Right, it's, it's been removed.
Well, it isn't on my cover. On the...
Page forty-two?
Two.
Yeah, the only, in my memo, okay, in the job description itself, it didn't, it didn't get taken out? Yeah, in my memo, I just did the minimum qualifications. Yeah, those are not, not intended to have those in the job description at all. So...
Well, with that removed, I will...
Oh, I see what you're saying. And then one, it says manage, oversee, coordinate, all departments, including the finance department?
So with that stricken, I will make a motion to approve this.
Oh, I agree.
I know, I noticed something in here that, um, I'm sorry, I didn't notice it at the work session, um, the part of the, uh, job description where it says, uh, supervision received, and it reads, "The city administrator is appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council." That is true, but the city administrator reports to the mayor and the city council. I would like that to be in writing and included in that section, if, unless anyone else objects.
Oh, you're talking in that, uh...
Same page.
Supervision received area, you want to add?
Correct.
It was in the current job description, it was approved a while back, but you want to add, "City administrator is appointed by the mayor and confirmed..."
We had changed that in, in the job description with a previous city administrator. We felt, the council felt that we wanted that addition, and it was passed and put in, so...
Okay.
Listing it like this is a change to the previous description.
Well, this was, okay, this was job description I got from Human Resource, so you must have missed one of the amendments. So that got amended?
It's, it's in the record.
It got amended when you're changing, um, Mr. Marino's job around?
Correct.
Okay. Well, why don't we do this? All I need for tonight really is the job announcement to get prepared, so we get that out, so we can start advertising, and then for the next work session, I'll give these amendments, and we'll, we'll clean it up, and it's where you're voting on document that you all agree, agree on.
So the announcement won't include the job description initially?
Well, what I want to get the job, what the consulting firm is asking for is that the job announcement is completed in its form, so they can start preparing. You got the recruitment brochure, but that has to be updated too, that recruitment brochure, that was just from the last one. So the next step is, before we publish, we will need to get this job description, you know, changed, so. But they want to start getting ready with the recruitment, uh, lining up all the associations and job sites and everything like that.
Sure.
So... Well, the job announcement's good, we can prove that tonight, it won't get posted until we get the job description cleaned up. That'll work.
We're only adding one word, and you're removing, we're adding "and" to the administrator, and then you're removing the part, so it's not like it's a big change.
So you want to keep the sentence the way it is, just add, "Supervision is by city council too?"
Well, that's how the order is read, actually.
It should be already in an ordinance.
That's what I'm saying, well, if it's already in there, then you want it, you're right, you already proved it once, I'll just make sure I got the right one, I'll email it all to you, before we send it out as a job description.
Okay.
I'll email and make sure I send it out the right one.
I just don't see why we need another work session for it.
You know, if it's, if it's already been approved, I'll just get the right one and make sure that's the one we're going to mail out.
So I'll second that motion with the changes.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal.
Well, I'm amending my, my motion to include Alderperson's pities change as well as mine.
Okay.
As discussed, to approve an addendum, or to approve the city administrator job announcement prepared by MGT Consulting Services. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
I'm not even sure what we're voting on, to be honest with you, but yes, to move the process forward.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Minus the confusion, yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And the next item on the agenda, uh, looking for a motion to, to approve the waiver of the water connection fee for 2213 Weber Road, an existing residential home.
Make the motion.
Second. I have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert, to approve the waiver, approval to waive the water connection fee for 2213 Weber Road, existing residential home. Questions or comments?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. Uh, I drove through part of my ward just from Broadway to Raynor Avenue, and driving just that much of my ward, not the other half with Raynor Hills, there are seven lots with no homes that have B-boxes. So I hope what you're doing in approving this, that you're going to be willing to give all these people the same way of not having to pay the fee, or not having to prove they paid the fee, or someone didn't do it in the past. And this doesn't include Raynor Hills or any part of Ward, two, three, or four. So that's just in that little area of mine, there's seven homes there with empty lots with B-boxes. So I don't know how many were without, you know, elsewhere in the city, but I voted no on the last one, I will vote no again on this one.
I have a comment as well. So as most of you know, I like to follow policy, I'm always about policy, and I believe there's a reason why we have ordinance and policy. It's not that I'm breaking the rule, and I agree with you, Scott, because where do you draw the line here? You know, and it's something that we need to put on a work session to discuss. The issue that I have here is that we waived the same thing to Mariage Ridge. I didn't see anyone had an issue here when John Evans came in here.
I voted no then.
You know, you noted that, but nobody else had made comments, um, or fight it, or made it seem like, oh, wow, while we're doing this, and we're not doing this, we're going to open a can of war. I feel at this point is, the clerk office never kept records, and the little records that we, they had, it was, most of it was destroyed, wet. Have any of you been in the second floor in the old building? Okay, we had, I, if I recall, Mayor, your assistant, and public work assistant, it was Maybel, and Karen, and, uh, not Karen, it was Ada, and, uh...
Vicki.
Jen, Jen, and they started organizing, a lot of the stuff were missing, a lot of the stuff were wet, a lot of the stuff were gone. And this is the issue that I have, the clerk never kept record. Things should have been either microfilm, you know, same thing with the building departments, we don't keep information for so long. Why is that? That's the reason why I'm going to vote for this, and if it's good for one, it's good for another person. I mean, I didn't see any issues with John Evans, and now I see a problem. I'm getting phone calls, I'm getting, uh, gossip, you know, people saying, oh, I can't believe she's going to vote, yeah, I am going to vote for this. And I agree with you, this has, something has to go to, to a work session, because we have to figure a solution for this. Because yes, we did open a can of war. That's exactly my same comment that I made when we approved that one shed on the round slab on the property, I said, you're opening can of war. How you tell one person yes and another person no? You know, now, if you can prove the paperwork for me, and you can prove that there's nothing, or then I will say, okay, what's good for one is good for all at this point. I'm an equal person.
But there are other lots.
I, I totally understand.
In my ward there...
But we're going to lower the tap on, isn't it?
No Buffalo Box.
We're going to lower the tap ons, correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, maybe we need to do either a program or something, but at this point is, if I vote for no, that would be discrimination, in my, in my opinion. You know, because if it's good for one person, then it's good for him too.
Well, I know at the last meeting, our engineer agreed with my comment, that when we're redoing streets and redoing the water, and if there's an empty lot, we should put a B-box there, so later on for future connection, it needs to be noted that there was no tap-on fee. Instead of digging the road up again after you redo the road and all that, it should be done while we're doing construction.
And I do disagree with you, and I just hope you understand where I'm coming from.
Well, you did say, didn't you, Ron, that on, on the ones you did, you did, they are indicated, it is recorded?
Correct, the projects I have recently done, we have as-built that show the B-boxes.
Which is what it should have been doing, done from the get-go.
Exactly, that should have been done, I just, I can't answer just particular one, but yes.
But unfortunately, that's what we're left to deal with, conjecture. We don't know if they did or they didn't, and we have no record saying they did, they have no record saying they did, we have nothing showing they didn't. And in a case like that, as I stated before, I will err on the side of the, of the resident, because you don't want them paying it twice, and nobody seems to have any record of whether it was paid or not. So how can you say, I said it for the other two too, there's no record proving they did or they didn't. Well, shame on us, shame on us as a city for not keeping proper documentation, but we cannot punish the homeowners for that. And if you have seven other lots, and there's no records on file either way for those, I'm going to feel the same way if I'm up here.
Well, a lot of these homes were built many years ago, and these things were done years ago, and the owner who's living there now wasn't there in the home when it was done, or when a fee might have been paid. So they're not paying a second fee, because if they've only lived there a couple years or 10 years, it was done long before that. So there is no proof, there is no way to say, and they wouldn't be paying it again. They never paid anything. So if someone else did before, that's moved or is passed on, and we don't have a record of that, but there's no way to prove, but I'm always going to be a no vote on it.
Well, and that's, that's your right, Scott, but I, I'm just...
I can't change my vote now.
I can get an ear on the side of the, of the residents.
Been told before, my wife's family was told that they didn't have no proof, and so they would have to pay a tap-on fee if a house was going to be built on that property.
But that was way before a lot of us were here.
Well, that was council's ruling. Now we're changing the rules.
Well, we should never change it from first, from day one.
So evidently, you don't need the proof, so...
Well, my, my thoughts on this is that there's already a house there. Are you, all the examples you have are on empty lots, is that correct?
Right, these are empty lots that are next in between like two homes, but there's a B-box there.
Right.
There's no home there.
This is, this is an existing home. So I look at it as if I'm investing in a piece of property and buying a home, I'm going to, maybe I would do a little bit more research, but I would assume that it has water and sewer in the city that I'm buying it, which if there's a B-box out front of a home that I'm purchasing, I, I would just make the assumption that it's ready to go with city potable water.
Well, it's also very possible when the road was done, they put that B-box in there so that later on it don't have to be dug up to put a B-box in.
Right, but that isn't even one, that isn't even our...
But that doesn't say a, a tap-on fee was paid or not paid.
That isn't even our road, that's, that's a county road that would have been put in. But I, I understand what you're saying, as far as the city roads, yeah, we're, we're trying to be proactive in putting those B-boxes there. But to Tina's point, if we don't have records of that, we, we have to err on the side of the, of the resident. Again, it's, it's my thought, my opinion.
Okay, Omar, before we take the vote, I'll give you an opportunity to say anything you'd like, to state your name, for the record, your address is optional.
Yes, sir, thank you. Omar DeHaro, 2213 Weber Road. Um, yeah, there is a house, and it's two and a half acres. Uh, if I build more houses in the future, uh, then I have to pay the whole, the whole amount, I, I assume. But again, since there is a house already in the, in the lot, or if, uh, if the city, if it's two and a half acres and there is room for four houses, are they going to install four, uh, B-boxes for the future?
Yes.
If I build more houses?
You would have to have a tap-on fee for each of those.
Right.
But right now, it's one pin, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you, you can't put another house on the same pin.
Right, so that means for the future houses...
But yeah, every house would have to have a tap-on fee. Correct, Ron?
Correct.
We're not planning to build more houses, I'm just saying.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Chris.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
No.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, you're all approved, okay?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city, everybody.
Have a nice night.
Anything else, Tony?
Um, in my memo, the first one is temporary gutter is still working over by the employee entrance. Uh, we thought with the weather change, if they might be able to come in and do a permanent, um, replacement, uh, since it's working under the design they have now, we're going to wait till the, till the weather is really broken free here, before we put in the, uh, the new system, which they got a design yet, and we got to look at, and our building department does too. The White Oak Library, they did accept our invitation. Um, Scott Boynton will be here on February 18th, is when he could make it. He only asked that he'd be first on the agenda if he could, because he's got to pick up a family member at the airport, so he's got to leave by eight o'clock. Um, I told him normally a 10:15 minute presentation would be probably, with some Q and A would probably work well. And this is again, uh, informational only, um, the library letting you know what the, uh, what the proposition is for the referendum. Nothing new on the Capitol, for the Capitol Development Board, for the Stateville, correctional. Fire District, we have another follow-up meeting with staff and their consultants. The application has been, uh, pretty complete, I would say. We do have one more final review that we have to do with them, and that's being scheduled up, so public hearing is scheduled for 3:13 at Planning Commission. The, uh, DBW staff is, is working with, um, Mike Stiff to prepare the cost estimates for us to deliver to the BL Duke Scrap Metal Recycling Yard, in reference to that, to the fire incident, and asking for reimbursement, um, and costs. The job announcements, two building inspectors that were given part, part-time position, initial offer, uh, that they've agreed to the initial offer, um, one has started already the background, uh, through Human Resource, and the second one's dropping off their, their releases, uh, this week. So hopefully, the, the goal is to at least get one of the backgrounds done in the next week or so, and try to get one in here for training in the next couple of weeks, and then maybe the second one after the, after that. Um, you know about the search for the, so the administrative position? Water meter replacement, ongoing, still going slow, but we are gaining one at a time, I would say, per, per week. Um, I think we're down to somewhere in that 50 range. Places for eating, uh, we are following through, looking at other civil action we could take. Um, we're planning on having an executive session next Monday, uh, with Attorney Stiff to sort of go, go over the process of what the civil action could be, that'll be done in executive session. We are planning on meeting with the owner, running instructors working on, uh, a meeting with him, we're hoping it's going to be tomorrow, uh, to talk to him, see if he's, what's, what's been his problem with the 15, um, late, uh, months that he hasn't, uh, the, we do know he is collecting the tax. So I think we'll hopefully have some success, that we don't have to take him to court, but we have to, we will. Uh, treatment plant, everything that you guys ordered up, all those change orders and everything else, has definitely put us on, kept us on schedule, as you heard from Julius, I think Ron also is, if everything keeps going the same way, we don't run into some supply chain issue with some of the, um, last-minute parts. supply chain issue with some of the, um, last-minute parts, um, they should be right on schedule, if not, maybe even a couple of months early. Crime Lab, they're just sitting there waiting for direction, I think from the state, um, regards, especially for their utility hookups. And the old city property, um, their application is, uh, is still being, we, being worked on, we thought we're gonna have it today, and we didn't get it today, but we did get, we did get some, um, audience in regards to proposed, uh, entrance, which I think is on Theodore, not on Nap, if I remember looking at it, so. I know Ron's gotta review it yet.
You mean round thirty?
Thirty, sorry.
Be a little tricky from Theodore.
Yeah, it would be, you're right, it would be. Thank you. Nothing else at this time.
Okay, any questions, City Administrator?
Uh, yes, uh, Tony, I was outside, uh, earlier today and was back there, and the way that looks, it definitely looks like temporary, because there's no way that could be done, finished, 'cause the water coming down from the gutter is gonna hit that pipe that's from the sub-pump and just splash all over the place. It has to be sealed up and that pipe redone, so hopefully.
Yeah, we need per, we need sort of our permanent design, maybe it's gonna be due to them, yeah.
Also, the other thing I put on your desk for you tonight, and I had discussed with you, uh, last year about, uh, budget with, uh, spending on coffee and the street department, I had approached you last year about it, and you said that there would be no more spending that they were told and informed, and this newest bill shows that they again bought more coffee.
Yes, they did.
So, I mean, what's going on, why is this continue to happen?
I'll be meeting with the, uh, the interim Public Works guy tomorrow.
I mean, this shouldn't be happening.
Correct.
They're the only one over budget, no one else is over budget.
Correct.
And this is twice now, not once, twice, so I hope this, I never see this again, I don't have to bring this up again.
I hope so too, so.
'Cause this, this is really disappointing that they can't abide by and follow what everyone else has done. The police department's abiding by it, they know about it, they haven't bought any more coffee, but yet the street department continues, so someone there has to be held liable for this, and to be told not to, you know, I thought everyone was told about this, and yet it continues to happen. Really discouraged.
Does it say who placed the order?
Yes, it does, the invoice shows it, I, he's got a copy of who made the order.
Yeah.
Well, that's the person you need to talk to.
And it was for both of them, both times.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mr. President.
Hey, thanks, Tony.
Uh, Tony, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'll make it quick, uh, in, uh, item number two regarding the White Oak Library.
Yes.
Presentation, the, the second sentence, if you could just clarify what it means, it says, "There will be action requested, this presentation is informational."
Those are words that's in there, there will not be action requested.
There will be no action requested?
No action, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Tony, um, is there a, a reason why, uh, the council doesn't get informed when there's businesses that they just opened? We have two new businesses that they reach out to me, the Sumarica Cafe, it's in Hillcrest Shopping Center, they opened two weeks ago, and they reach out to me, they're advertising at the Chris Hill business, and also Burger City. These things should be part of your report or economic development, I mean, we have a part-timer and a full-timer, and we still don't get any information about businesses.
All right, well, talk to the Community Development Department, and, uh, so you wanna be notified in all new business, all new businesses?
I mean, it looks weird when the resident or they reach on, they say, "Oh, we just opened, come visit us," you know, and I know they're from Columbia, so they reach out to me, and I'm like, "Uh, I was not aware that you opened," um, so I apologize to them. But it's, I think everybody should know about it, including the public, so this is the way you promote businesses in a city.
Correct.
I agree a hundred percent that we should be notified of, uh, new businesses in the city, um, so that we could be, we're knowledgeable, we, we should know what's going on in the city that, that we represent and that we're elected by the residents, and if residents ask questions and we don't, we don't know, it, it doesn't make the city look very good. In addition to that, I think it'd be good to know when, when businesses close, 'cause I know I get questions regarding closings as well, so I think we should be notified of that when those happen too.
Why notify everybody about Jitterhead, and, you know?
Well, right, but.
But, but there are other, you know, that, you know, that we were notified.
But businesses, we need to advertise them, that's the issue, but also when they close, 'cause not many people know about them.
Right.
Yeah, I'll discuss it with Patrick tomorrow, the staff meeting.
Thank you.
We'll figure out a way to, to get notices out.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Uh, moving on to Public Works Department, we have no agenda items this evening, and Julius will be back tomorrow. Moving on to our city engineer, Ron Weidman, good evening, Ron.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, got quite a few items on tonight, the first one is to, a motion to approve a resolution for an intergovernmental agreement for funds received through the CDBG program for PY two thousand twenty-four program operations for the Oakland Avenue Water Main and Roadway Rehabilitation Improvement from Pasadena to Ludwig between the city of Crestill and Will County, Illinois, and it's in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty cents.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderwoman Methen, for a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Crestill and Will County for Community Development Black Grant Program for year two thousand twenty-four program operations, questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you, resolution one-two-eight-one.
The next item is approve resolution adopting a policy regarding installation of stops, signs, and yield signs in the city of Crestill and the procedure under which such requests will be processed.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderwoman Methen, for a resolution adopting a policy regarding the installation of stop signs and yield signs in the city of Crestill and the procedure under which such requests will be processed, questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution one-two-eight-two.
Next item is approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of water works and sewer revenue bonds for the city of Crestill, Will County, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed four point four million dollars.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal. For an ordinance to appro, uh, approve an ordinance authorizing issuance of water works and sewerage revenue bonds to the city of Crestill, Will County, Illinois, in aggregate principal amount not to exceed four million four hundred thousand dollars, questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance two-oh-one-two.
The next item is approve a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for the maintenance and energy of traffic signals at the intersection of Weber Road and Randits Road in the city of Crestill, Will County, Illinois.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin. Approve a resolution for an inter, intergovernmental agreement for the maintenance and energy of traffic control signals at the intersection of Weber Road and Randits Road in the city of Crestill, Will County, Illinois, questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution one-two-eight-three.
Items eleven through fourteen, there's one memo in for each one, we have to take these separately, um, but basically, uh, these are final resolutions that need to be passed for the Illinois rebuild funds that the city has, uh, spent over the last few years, and my, I outline each of the projects and the dollar values in the memo. We've closed the jobs out completely, this is the last piece that IDON is asking us to do, to close these out completely, to show that we have spent the one point three million dollars that have been received. So the first item is approve a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for Section Number two-one dash zero-zero-zero-five-two dash zero-zero dash PV in the amount of one million three hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, approve resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code in the amount of one million three hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred and forty dollars, questions or comments? Roll call.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution one-two-eight-four.
The next one is approve a resolution, the amount, I'm sorry, approve a resolution for the improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for Section Number two-one dash zero-zero-zero-five-three dash zero-zero dash PV in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Dyke for a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution one-two-eight-five.
The next one is approve a resolution for the improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for Section Number twenty-three dash zero-zero-five-seven dash zero-zero dash RS in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderwoman Methen to approve a resolution appro, improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for, for, uh, an amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution one-two-eight-six.
And the last one is approve a resolution for the amount under the Illinois Highway Code for Section Number two-four dash zero-zero-zero-five-nine dash zero-zero dash RS in the amount of four thousand one hundred and six dollars and fifty-three cents.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Methen, to approve a resolution for improvement under Illinois Highway Code in the amount of four thousand one hundred and six dollars and fifty-three cents, questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution one-two-eight-seven.
Thank you very much, that's all I have on the agenda tonight.
Any questions of city engineer?
Yes, Ron, uh, since the building department is not here, um, between you and Tony, is there a way we can put on the next work session or two work sessions from now about driveways? Especially in private community.
What in specific, what in specific?
Uh, the apron, I would like to put this on the agenda, there's some rules that the city have changed a couple of years ago, and it doesn't make sense.
And we've already revised those, Claudia, um, and if you wanna give me a buzz, but basically, the, uh, standards have been updated that any resident, it's a resident that has an existing asphalt apron can replace it with asphalt, according to our detail, that was revised last August.
Uh, well, I have a resident last year, um, that they need her put, um, cement, so I would like this on the agenda, so we can discuss and make sure our ordinance, because the ordinance doesn't state that, and this way, everybody will be on the same page.
Okay.
Especially in private community, like there, you know, you don't maintain our street, you don't maintain our driveways, why we have to spend money on an apron for cement, so this is why we'd like this on the agenda, to make sure that we cross all the ties.
Yeah, we also, in my ward, Ward one, had two residents that redid driveways, and they had, even though they did blacktop, they had to put a concrete apron in.
And that might've been before the order, it was changed.
Well, it was this summer.
But yeah.
It was done this summer, so.
And we were not aware of it.
And we redo streets, and when we redo a street like we did Wilcox over there, all the aprons there were, you know, asphalt, there was nothing there that was put in concrete, except the one person who had a concrete apron.
Right.
Got a concrete apron. But then we got residents that had to put a concrete apron in with their blacktop driveway and spend the extra money.
Yeah, because on the long term, this is gonna affect the look of the city, because people can't afford to do, you know, blacktop and concrete, and you're gonna have.
We can have the conversation.
May I, may I finish? Okay.
But you, I'm sorry, guys.
Okay, go ahead. We're gonna have all these, um, broken aprons, that they look like garbage, and that's not, to me, is not helping the city, that's not the way we do business, and if there is any changes, you know, again, I hope we, communication is so important, if there's some, if there is change for an ordinance, we need to communicate with each other, you know, this is change, you know, council people, residents, so everybody knows, the website needs to be updated, your ordinance need to be updated, you know, we can't figure these things out of our head, oh, there is a change, so I appreciate some more communication.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Uh, Community Development, we have nothing on the agenda, Patrick will be here tomorrow, Police Department, our Police Chief Ed Clark, good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, I do not have any agenda items this evening, but I'd be willing to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of Police Chief? All right, thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to the Mayor's Report, I do not have any agenda items, but we did have the honor and the privilege of having a visit last Wednesday, February, January 29th, from Congresswoman Lauren Underwood, who presented us with a $200,000 check for Corrosion and Control Study for the bringing Lake Michigan water to the city of Crest Hill. I will say that Congresswoman Underwood has been very helpful to the city of Crest Hill during this process for the last four years, and the Lake Michigan water supply that we're trying to bring to the city of Crest Hill, so I want to publicly thank her very much for, for that grant that we did receive, and I'd like to read what we put on the website and Facebook on the following day. The city of Crest Hill would first like to thank Representative Lauren Underwood for providing the city with this grant through community project funding. These funds are being used by the city for a corrosion control treatment study to examine how the new Lake Michigan water source will interact with the city's existing water lines. The study is looking specifically at levels of copper and lead in the existing pipes, and how the pipes will act when the city switches from its drinking water from wells to the new Lake Michigan water supply. Crest Hill is part of the Grand Prairie Water Commission, a group of six communities in northern Illinois that will be utilizing Lake Michigan as an alternative water source. This study is an improvement, is an important step in the transition that will ensure the community continues to have access to safe and clean water. This study is about 50% complete and should be completed by the end of 2025. We did have several members of City Council and several members of staff that were here with her, along with her staff, so again, I would just like to thank her for her, her contribution of that grant to the city of Crest Hill, and if any of the aldermen, alderwomen that were here would like to make any comment, feel free.
Well, I think it's really wonderful to have such a nice relationship with our, our people in Washington, and she was very, very happy to be here and happy to give us the money and, and hoping to work out some more for the city of Crest Hill. So having that communication with her, and she, it was a, it was a nice day, and she was a wonderful person, I thought, and I was very happy to be here to see her.
I love how humble she is.
Yeah.
She definitely has humble. Mayor, you said that day that she had been in Carolina twice?
I believe she was there once during one of her political debates that she had.
Oh, it was the debate, okay. Is there a reason, like, why these politicians don't come, like, to meet with, like, another resident, not just only Carolina?
They've had them since they, since their inception. Anyone else like to make comment, other Congresswoman?
While I wasn't able to be here for that, I've been to multiple of her campaign events, and beyond her being a nurse and just a wonderful person, you know, I'm just grateful for people out there who truly have our best interests at heart, like her.
Well, man, like I told her, we like the big checks, so keep them coming. And it's out in the foyer or the clerk's office? Clerks by the clerks. Okay, moving on to our City Clerk, Christine Brashell, good evening, Chris.
Good evening. The Clerk's Office staff mailed out in November 574 business renewal applications, and as of today, mail, 79 of them, businesses did not pay. So a letter will be going out to them that they are late, and there's a penalty, and then they're given seven to 10 days from receiving the letter. After that, then everything will be turned over to code enforcement to go after the businesses. And that's all I have to report. Our staff did a fantastic job.
I have a comment for you. I do owe you an apology, because my comment earlier was wrong, that is a public building department about the paperkeeper or recordkeeper for that particular, that is the building, you are correct, so I apologize, for the record, that will be the building department, so.
Thank you for your expression.
Yes, I admit when I make mistakes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And good job on that, but 79, that is a lot of, a lot of businesses.
I don't think as many as last year. I think we had over 100 of them last year.
And these include home businesses and some of the ones that may not be around anymore, too?
Yeah.
So once a business does not come in for a license, and they're sent a letter stating there's penalties, and they have to go through that process, what kind of follow-up does the city do to make sure they're not operating even though they, without a license?
The businesses that do not then come in with, after receiving the notification, then will be turned over to code enforcement, and then code enforcement will go out and check if they're still there, or it'll be up to code enforcement.
You said there are 79 that haven't responded, haven't come in?
That haven't responded.
And last year, there was more than that?
Yes, I believe there was about 100 last year.
So of those about 100, how many eventually did come up with the, with the the cost, the payment for the license, and how many did not? But, go ahead.
We'll have to go back in our records and look, but it was a good portion of them that came in. That's when you guys made the, made the payment plan. They had so many days, we called every single one of them, you had so many days to pay, and you got this much off, after this timeframe, you got this much off, so a lot of them did come in and comply with it.
Well, the reason I'm asking about the process is because there's currently, and we're going to talk about it next week in executive session, currently a business that operated the entire 2024 calendar year without a license.
Correct.
And was able to continue, and they're, they're continuing now, some, well over a year now.
Correct. And that went to administrative hearing, did it not?
Yes, yes, there was a citation issued.
Did they show up?
No.
No.
That's why we're going to have, we have to, we have to explore other legal remedies when you got businesses that do not apply either business licenses or the hard taxes. It's got to be an illegal, either injunction or something, because we can't go, can't close them, you know, we need to cite them, they're operating without a business license. We'll have to get court, get court about, if we want to try to, if we have to close them, again, with the fines, too.
Well, if they come up with the, the past taxes, I don't think that's a get out of free, get out of jail free card. I think the penalties and, and late fees should still be enforced, otherwise there's no incentive to pay it on time, if all you have to do is come up with the money, and you said they've been collecting it all year, so that means they're holding that money.
That's the.
Yeah, that's a discussion we'll be having, yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Moving on to our City Treasurer's Report, our Treasurer, Glenn Conklin, good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, can I, I seek your approval on our list of bills issued through February 4th of 2025, in the amount of $371,000, or $371,949.41.
So moved, just presented. Second.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Metfen, for the approval of the list of bills, questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metfen?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, the next two items are informational, our regular overtime payroll from January 13th, 2025, through January 26th, 2025, total $255,360.32. And our, lastly, our quarterly compensation, quarterly compensation time buyback for the period of October 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2024, total $35,316.72. That's all I have for this evening, unless there's any questions.
Questions of City Treasurer? All right.
Thanks, and good night.
Unfinished business, we have nothing, anybody? New business, anybody? Committee Liaison Reports, we do have an agenda item, per the request of Alderman Dyke, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I had talked with everybody at the work session, this is something we've been doing for a number of years, and we're going to continue to do this. Last year, we're going to do the same as for this year. What we did last year, we got to advertise in two different guides, and because we're a member, we get a rate of $850, so I'm seeking council's approval for us to advertise in both them, booklets, for the $850.
I'll make a motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin, for the approval of an ad insertion agreement with Shaw Media for the 2025 Heritage Corridor Travel Guide for the amount of $850. Questions or comments?
I have a question, who determines what goes in the ad?
The, the city does, we usually have something like
Well, that's what I mean, who?
That shows, you know, something of the city, if you've looked at our past booklets that you got?
Yeah.
I don't know if you've looked at our ads?
Yeah.
And seen what we have there.
I'm just wondering who does that?
You usually have, like, a picture with Ladis or outside our, you know, memorial out here for veterans and that, and then we have dates listed for this year of when Memorial Day, Labor Day, all the different stuff, whatever we do, and Ladis, the dates for those ceremonies.
No, that's great, I'm just wondering if, from, from each year, it's updated to include what's presently in Crest Hill?
Yes, we do it every year.
The reason I ask that, because on the, on the website, there's a, several videos, kind of like a marketing for the city, and I just noticed them, I don't know how long they've been up there, so I, I, I looked at all of them, and many of the slides, I guess you'd say, within that, within those videos, were, were really out of date pictures, they had pictures of the old city hall, and if we're trying to promote the city, and especially to future developers or residents, we should be putting our best foot forward, and maybe, you know, especially since we're in the new building here, it, it wasn't anywhere to be found in any of those, any of those video clips, and they actually showed, also showed businesses on there that were, that are no longer in business, like the bowling alley was in the one, and that's been closed for quite some time now.
Well, I don't know if that's a, like, a thing's going back showing different years, but I just know what goes in the booklet, and each year, like when the city hall wasn't open yet, we had a thing where it showed the new city hall with an aerial view that was advertised in these booklets, and it said, "Opening soon, spring or summer of that year", and it just had an aerial view of the city, so I know we try to take, and every year, we have an up-to-date photo of what we have here and what we do for these booklets, so people know.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but the, both of those magazines are more summer issues?
Right, exactly.
So that's why we have Memorial Day at Ladis in, in the pictures, because those are the summer events.
Right.
Thank you, Scott, for doing this every season. But perhaps, Tony, maybe you can reach out to her, and see if we can have new videos, maybe?
Yeah, let me talk to the Patrick.
Yeah.
He's been talking about putting together a marketing, recommendations, so I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
So, are you done, Scott?
Yeah.
So speaking of Ladis, I did speak with the, the representative from the school, and the old representative over the weekend, and the date for this year will be Sunday, June 8th, so they did verify that with me, and we currently have a very well-known author that is doing a book, and I've been speaking with her a lot, and it's about that, and I know it takes about a year to get a book written, but I did speak with her over the weekend as well, again, and I said to her that when the book was done, hopefully she'll come to the ceremony that year, and it'd be quite nice, and she was very excited about that, so as I learn more, you'll learn more.
Could we vote on this, Chris?
No.
No, not yet, we got, Alder, Alderwoman Gazal made the motion, Alderwoman Oberlin seconded, we just need roll call.
Roll call.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metfen?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
And Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, anybody else under Committee Liaison Reports? City Council comments, positive City Council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We'll begin with Ward 1, Alderman Dyke tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little reminder for everybody, Valentine's Day is coming, so don't forget your significant other, keep peace at home and that, you know, and I also want to say a happy anniversary to my wife.
Aww.
Happy anniversary.
Alderwoman Metfen?
I would also like to say happy anniversary to Mr. and Mrs. Dyke.
Thank you.
How many years?
39.
All right.
Way too long.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.